So, welcome everyone to today's virtual event. We are very happy to have some leaders from TREC with us that Bob will be introducing very shortly. This is intended to be a town hall, a listening session. They want to hear from you, H A R members. So, we will have a point later in this program where you can ask questions or give comments, and you'll hear more about that from them. So, Bob, take it away.
Scott and Chelsea, this is fantastic that you're with H A R today. Pardon me, I just want to say I've known Scott Kessler for most of his 25 years in his real estate career. Scott served as Chair of the Texas Realtors. And the last time I was with Scott was in February in a ballroom at the Hyatt in Austin, Texas. And there was a video playing on this giant screen honoring Scott as the Texas Realtor Realtor of the Year. Scott, we're very proud of you, as always.
Thank you.
Scott earned a B F, no pun there, Scott, in criminal justice from Soul Roth University. And for a leader, I will tell you, Scott has the best sense of humor of anyone I have ever known. If you ever feel down, call Scott. Bottom line is, he is just one great person. We're so honored to have our good friend, Scott Kessler, Chairman of the Texas Real Estate Commission with us today. And we also want to welcome Chelsea Buckholz, who's the Executive Director of TREC. Chelsea, I think you're the first female in history to serve in that role. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Scott, one more great decision on your part. And Chelsea earned her J D from Pepperdine School of Law. And I met Chelsea in February during a T R meeting in Austin. And I go up to her and I asked her, I said, "Now, you're the new General Counsel for TREC." And she smiled and she responded, "No, I'm the new Executive Director." I immediately thought, "Whoops," but knew her off to good start. And later, I had an hour phone call with Chelsea, and believe me, TREC and Texas Realtors are in great hands. And I also want to say a big thank you to Delora Wilkinson, former Chair of H A R and current member of the Texas Real Estate Commission, appointed by Governor Abbott, who's doing an outstanding job for Texas Realtors and Texas consumers. Welcome, Scott and Chelsea to H A R. Thank you so much for being with us today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob, and thank you, H A R, for hosting this. We wish we were in person. We had it planned, had the nice hotel picked out, and this little COVID-19 started, so everybody kind of went in the big queue. You know, everybody's posting on Facebook, they can't wait to walk in and say, "Yes, I'll start a tab." Okay? Even I would probably pay for some drinks if we could get together sometime. But, you know, this is a great opportunity for us to visit with, you know, licensees across the state. And I want to echo what you said for Commissioner Wilkinson and Commissioner Stevens, being such an asset to our commission and just the licensees across the state. I'm extremely fortunate to sit on the commission and sit as Chairman. We're extremely fortunate to have Chelsea on board. She has just came on board running and has done some really great things. We've got a presentation, probably 10, 15 minutes, and I'll be honest with you, we're not going to give you a lot of answers today. We're going to listen to concerns, we're going to write them down. We hosted one for Metro Tech last week and got a whole lot of information we need to take back to the agency. That way, we know how to best serve the licensees. It's a little different task than I'm normally used to, working for an agency versus association, but with something we are learning to handle, and we're looking forward to this. And like I say, anything concerned you have, if we don't have time to cover it, send it to us. We're taking all this, giving it to staff, and having them start working on some different things. One thing we heard a lot last week was wholesaling, what a huge issue it is across the state. And that's something that really wasn't on our radar as much as it was last week. So, I'm going to turn it over to our new Executive Director. I say, I mean, she's been there like six months, you know, she's got some seniority, Chelsea Buckholz, and she'll start the presentation.
Great. Thanks, Scott, and thank you, Bob, for having us. It sounds like there's a little bit of an echo. Did we get that fixed? I think so. Bob, I'll tell you, I was the new General Counsel before I was the new Executive Director, so you were not wrong. I'm happy to be with TREC. I came to TREC as their General Counsel last March and then became Executive Director in January. This new role has been anything but typical, really because of COVID-19 throwing our world for a loop, and certainly that is true for us, that has changed things at TREC. We continue to conduct business primarily remotely, though we have begun a small return back to our office as of today. I expect that to be very small until we see, really until we're on the other side of this health disaster and the threat associated with it. But I'm very proud of how our agency has responded to the change in how we do business. And I hope that you have seen that responsiveness from our agency. We have staff who are answering the phones from their home. So, you may hear a little children's chatter or a dog barking in the background, but our work has not stopped, even though we are primarily working from home. One thing in particular to make note today is that we have extended all renewals that came due in March, and April, and May, and in June until the end of July. But the end of July will be the end of those extensions. And so, I encourage all of you who are in the process of, or are caught in that extension renewal, or renewal extension process, to get your C E completed and finalize that. We will not, barring any additional, you know, big change in our world, we will not extend those deadlines any further. We have a great article on our website, as new as of, I think, last week, explaining all of the ins and outs of the renewal process within this COVID-19 extension world. So, if you need any help, that's a great place to start, and of course, you can always call us. At the end of our presentation today, we will, our emails are included, both Scott's and mine, and then also a general.counsel@trek.txt, trek.texas.gov. Need to get that right, so that you have any, you know, just questions you want to ask, those are three good options. I still consider myself new, though I am much more seasoned than I think I would have been had COVID-19 not hit us. There's a few things I want you to know about me. First is that I'm new to real estate. I have dabbled in the world of real estate in my personal life, but I have not worked in this capacity until coming onboard last March. It's a world that I'm loving, and I really appreciate being a part of it. I'm not new to the political or the state agency world. I've been in that world most of my career, worked for Governor Perry as a lawyer in his shop, and then later as a policy advisor for about six years, and then have worked in various state agencies in leadership capacities. In each of those jobs, I learn the subject matter on the job. So, while I'm not an expert in real estate right now, I am surrounded by experts and will soon, I am doing my part to learn as quickly as I can. It's important to me to have a very, to have a healthy relationship with our license holders and also the associations that represent them, like H A R. While our missions are similar, that of TREC and that of H A R, they're not exactly the same. But regardless of that, I, it is important to me that we remain candid and transparent and communicative and relationship-focused and fair. We're doing that well right now between us, and I expect that to continue. But I want you to know that that is important to me. The mission today is for us to hear from you. We will show you a few pieces of our strategic direction and our plans, and we want to hear from you on how best to navigate that road ahead. So, we will do more listening than talking. I did want you to know the mission of our agency. It's quite long, there are many words associated with it, but the bottom line, feel free to pass, to switch to the next slide. Thanks, Christina. Bottom line on our mission statement is that we must balance consumer protection with regulation that supports continued economic growth in an ever-changing marketplace. So, that's our tension, consumer protection and economic growth. I did want to mention, as I said, we are not an association. We are an agency that licenses and enforces laws. That is what we do, and we do that within the context of consumer protection and economic growth. Next slide. The expectations for today is simply to walk through a few of our potential initiatives. We want to know what you like, what you dislike, what have we missed in these initiatives? I think we learned last week that one of the things that we need to add to our list is wholesaling. So, it's added, we've done that, but our ears are open. Next slide. We'll have a few specific questions for you, and we expect you to have some questions for us. These questions are, what do you think of our direction? What excites you? What do you think will have opposition? And then also, how can TREC best support your work? It's important to us that we support your work. And then how are we being an impediment? Are we being an impediment? If so, how? And then what do you wish that we knew that it seems that we might not know? And then are we asking the right questions? So, I am going to do, I'm not going to do much more talking today. I will fill in the gaps where Scott would like for me to, but he is one of you. He is a Realtor, and so he is the best person to take the lead. So, Scott, I pass the floor.
Okay, thank you. Some of the strategic initiatives that we're looking at that require some legislation is, you know, everybody talks about license portability. And even though the governor has, you know, sent directives to all agencies, you know, they want to be careful, they want to be careful not to put too many barriers in getting into business, and that went to all agencies, not just Texas. Even though we want license portability, we still have to maintain our number-one focus, and that is to protect the consumer. Okay? We just appointed a new Broker Responsibility Working Group. I would like to say there was over 80 applicants for that group, and I don't, I know we have Leslie Lerner from the Houston area, I was thinking there was one more from Houston that I can't think of right now. Well, one of the charges they're looking at is, you know, do you substitute some education for, some experience for education, you know? Determine whether current requirements are least restrictive, or can you regulate it more effectively? Do we reduce the total education hours required for brokers if they have some experience? You know, do we establish some not succeed limits to both experience and education? Broker Responsibility Group is taking all of that and examining it, and we don't know which way it's going to go. Last week, we heard, no matter how long you've been in the business, you should not reduce hours. No, no matter, you know, how long you've been in the business, do reduce the hours, you know, on experience. So, that's something that, no matter which way we go, it will take legislation. Next slide, please. You know, broadening authority and use of drones by agents, inspectors, and appraisers, you know? Every time I read an article on drones and how you can use them and what's required to use them, I get more and more confused. So, maybe getting something to simplify that. Maybe allow candidates to obtain fingerprints and determine whether or not they can get a license prior to taking the classes and passing the test, you know? And then allow agency to respond to emergency and natural disasters by renewing or extending the renewal cycle. The governor's office has been very, very receptive as far as renewing the renewal cycle, but maybe that's something that we can take a little bit more ownership with and control with when we do have natural disasters, whether it's a hurricane, fires, COVID-19, whatever it is, you know, give us the ability to maybe take a little bit more active role in that. Also, next slide. Add statutory language to require insurance requirements for inspectors and right-of-way agents. Eliminate and repeal the Inspector Recovery Fund, which is, you know, Chelsea, I'll have you clean this up. The Recovery Fund is there for inspectors, there's a limit on it, and once we hit that limit, that money goes back into general revenue. And I don't know if we have ever not exceeded that limit. It's something that's there that is not being used, maybe we need to go back and look at that. And then maybe reduce some state regulations on right-of-way agents. Okay? You want to add anything to the Inspector Recovery Fund?
Only that those first two bullets, the statutory language to clarify the insurance requirements of inspectors and the Inspector Recovery Fund are very much connected. The reason the Recovery Fund is not utilized is because inspectors are required to have insurance. There is some confusion about the levels of insurance and some of those details, and so that's where the clarification needs to come. But the thought is that because that insurance requirement exists, the Recovery Fund could be eliminated, because it is not a fund that's highly utilized, and it means the funds that are being collected for that often roll into the general, the fund that is utilized by the Texas Legislature to fund other state functions not associated with real estate. So, we want to make sure that the funds we collect are used by our license holders or for the intention of protecting our license holders, like a recoup.
Use it for what it was collected for.
Yes.
And if you've followed the last two or three commission meetings, I mean, the inspectors have a lot of big rocks they're moving, okay, as far as licenses and insurance and everything. Okay, let's go and go to the next slide. These are some operational initiatives that don't necessarily need legislative approval. You know, we're looking at exploring the elimination of check processing and move to more of an electronic payment system. I will tell you, we talked about this in February at the Texas Realtor Meeting, and it was not, it was not welcome. You know, there was a lot of people that still write checks, and we did a little research, right, asked some questions. We still process about $250,000 worth of checks a month, okay? I had no idea that many people still wrote checks. So, you know, we are going to look at more and more electronic, you know, increase automation and self-service by the license holders. I know we have certainly done wonderful things in the past as far as, you know, sponsoring an agent or terminating a license or whatever, but we need to continue to move that. Decrease license processing time. You know, that's one of the questions we're going to talk about later, but, you know, our concern is, when does the process start? We will have people turn in their application. They might not take a class through a year, okay? So, when does the actual processing time start? Maintain a one-minute average for hold times in the call center. Y'all, the last two months, we have been under one minute, okay? Which is incredible, if you remember what Sunset Report said, yet at the same time, we would like to get to a point where there's not a hold time, you pick it up and say hello. Okay? Maybe set additional metrics is needed for y'all to measure our performance, for us to measure our performance. Increase availability on data on emergency businesses. I know there's a lot of, there's a lot of talk about internet buyers and wholesaling and stuff. You know, we need to look and see exactly how big a part of that business is it, and are we being active or proactive, or are we ahead of the curve, or are we playing defense? And then simplify the rules. I think y'all remember a few years ago, we had some new advertising rules, and the more you read it, the more confused you got. So, we want to make the horse simplified. We want the rules simplified for understanding, and I think the more understanding, the easier it is for everybody to follow. And I'm going to turn it back over to Chelsea.
Next slide just reviews the questions that we'd like to ask of you. What do you think of our direction? How can we support you? Are we acting as an impediment? How? What do you wish we knew? So, we'll pass it back to you, Christina, for what comes next.
Thank you for that, for that update. So, we actually had some members, we have members on now that are watching and already asking questions and have comments for you guys, but we actually had some members that submitted some in advance, and we want to share those with you. And as you said, maybe these are things that you have an answer for, maybe it's things that need to be reviewed. So, one of the, one of the questions that we had, you've already answered, but it was, what exactly does TREC do and what are your responsibilities in your roles? Is there anything you wanted to add to that in addition to what you've already said?
Sure. I think both of us might have a few things. First and foremost, we license several types of licenses, sales agents and brokers, of course, also inspectors, residential service companies, education providers, the no-longer instructors, easements, right-of-way agents and businesses, and then time shares. So, of course, sales agents and brokers are the majority of our work, but we do have, you know, multiple license types. So, we license, and then we also enforce our rules and the Real Estate License Act and a few other acts. I did, I think it's, we often get questions that should probably be directed to the associations. And I know the associations, either Texas Realtors, H A R, even N A R, they also get questions that are sometimes better directed to the licensing entity, in our case, TREC. And so, I do think it's important to know the different roles between those two entities. Sometimes we get complaints over the membership dues, and we say, "Oh, goodness, that's not us, you know, go somewhere else." So, I did want to just mention, we do have different duties, but my job is really just to manage the day-to-day operations of the agency, managing staff and projects, communications internally, externally, making sure the commissioners, nine commissioners have what they need. It's really the oversight of people and processes. I love it.
Let me add a little bit about Chairman, and I think this came out very evident during the sunset. You know, we need to, as a commission, as Chairman of the Board, we need to make sure that we're effective in the direction the agency needs to be, needs to be moving, and the task we're supposed to be accomplishing. At the same time, I think we're very dependent upon staff, and we've got great staff at the Texas Real Estate Commission. And when I was appointed Chairman, I sat down with every leader of every department and had, I mean, one-on-one conversations, what's good, what's bad, what's ugly. We've got great, great staff, yet ultimately, it's up to the Board, it's up to the commission to make sure that the direction and the task are being completed. And I think if you, we'll talk about this a little bit later with one of the questions, if you look at the engagement of the commission now versus maybe a year ago, whenever, I think we're probably more engaged now, and I think a lot of that has to do with Sunset, making sure we were engaged.
So, this question has been asked a lot recently. We've seen a lot of questions about fair housing, about Realtors, maybe posting, or Realtors and real estate agents posting, you know, racist remarks or posts on social media. So, if you could explain for all of us, what is the complaint process? How is it enforced for those who feel fair housing rules have been violated?
Sure. I have, I have a few different paths to go on this question. First and foremost is that we are complaint-driven. So, we rely on others to file complaints to our agency that we then investigate. So, that means we count on all of you to file complaints. They cannot be anonymous, though part of the sunset legislation that was passed did allow for the first communication with a respondent, a person being complained against, would not reveal the person who filed that complaint. Often, it's obvious, but where we can, we keep that information confidential on that first communication. It will not remain confidential, so it is not an anonymous complaint. We don't work with anonymous complaints, so I did want to mention that. We also have received lots of questions around, you know, how to regulate folks who say offensive things on really their own Facebook pages, and we don't have jurisdiction to regulate that unless they are making those offensive, illegal statements in connection with a real estate transaction. I haven't seen any of those comments being made in that context. So, primarily, it's really just others seeing offensive comments and not liking it, and I don't either. But that's something that we don't have jurisdiction to oversee. We also have limited jurisdiction over fair housing issues. The Texas Workforce Commission takes the primary responsibility for most fair housing issues, but we will get involved to the extent that it violates our rules in relation to what comes up most often is like an advertisement. So, that is not an answer I love to say because it means we can't do very much. I would encourage you, if you think there is something we could do, file a complaint. Let us look at it and see if there's something we can do, and then we'll circle back and talk it through. We have written several great articles on this subject, on just how to file a complaint, what's the complaint process. We have a search mechanism on the top of our website, and if you just type in complaint, the word complaint into that search mechanism, a lot of good articles will pop up for you. And then lastly, I wanted you to know that our Enforcement Division deals with a very high volume of complaints, but that, those complaints really only reflect about 1% of sales and brokers. Only 1% of sales, sales agents and brokers ever get a complaint filed against them. So, we are careful to use complaints as a data driver in terms of like the behavior of our license holders, because those complaints really represent a very small number of license holders. Scott, what have I missed on that?
I think you got it covered. You know, if you see something you think we can control, I mean, certainly let us know, because, I mean, we're hearing it not only from the agency side, but also the commission side, also the association side, also is the broker. You know, we're hearing it. And so, yeah, I think more of a broker grabbing the agent and talking to them more than enforcement can do anything.
Okay. So, a few more questions here in regards to enforcement, or one more question in regards to enforcement. As the newly-appointed head of enforcement, is there any plan for renewed emphasis on enforcement for those who've been found to have violated various articles?
So, I do want to say the name, Mike Malloy. He is our new head of enforcement. He reports to me. So, he started about, he has been with our Enforcement Division for many years, that became the Director of Enforcement, I believe about a month ago. So, I'm very excited about him joining our leadership team and what he will contribute. I, this is just a place to reiterate that we are complaint-driven. So, we don't have an opportunity to show an emphasis on anything other than what we're seeing in complaints. So, any particular, you know, various articles, I think that that is primarily referencing something on the association side. But we will enforce all of our rules in the Real Estate License Act in total as those complaints come to us.
Okay. Very good. So, we had a lot of questions about requirements, salesperson requirements, brokers requirements, excuse me. Is there any plan to increase the requirements to obtain a salesperson and/or broker's license?
I will start that and let you clean up, Chelsea. Currently, there are no, nothing right in the pipeline as far as increasing number of hours to obtain a license, either for a salesperson and/or a broker. The Broker Responsibility Group is working at the requirements to become a broker. Some of those might include, you know, some time versus education, maybe not. Broker Responsibility Group started about six, seven years ago, then went from two years to four years with experience in the point system. That's always been reviewed by the Broker Responsibility Working Group. That's always been reviewed by the Broker Responsibility Working Group. Education Standards Advisory Committee, E S A C, that is the group that looks at the education requirements, either keeping them the same, increasing them, maybe, you know, there's some talk about maybe having a special license for property managers. So if anything comes out as increasing hours for getting a license, it will come through. We call it E S A C, Education Standards Advisory Committee. And I might add Commissioner Wilkinson is the liaison from the commission to the E S A C meeting and has done an incredible job. There was a motion last May at the commission to increase renewal hours from 18 to 21 hours with three hours of contracts. The commission adopted requiring three hours of contracts, but did not move it from 18 to 21, but did see the importance of having three hours of contracts as far as renewal. Okay, Chelsea?
You know, the only thing I can think of on that is that we are, we are living within the tension of wanting to ensure that our license holders are equipped to do their job well and to regulate that well. With the, with the tension, with the really directive from the governor's office, from Governor Abbott, asking to remove any barriers to entry and to ensure that our requirements for licenser are the, are the least they, they could be to have qualified license holders. So that, that's the tension we, we operate within. Now, I, I will mention that that directive from Governor Abbott was for all licensed licensing agencies. It wasn't specific to Trek license holders. So it is not as if he is saying, Trek, you need to lower requirements for sales agents and brokers. But he is wanting us to examine and ensure that what we do require is the least it could be to have qualified license holders.
And one example of that is, I think it was either February or May, Chelsea helped me, where if someone was renewing and they were behind on their student loans, they were still allowed to renew their license. And at one time, that was a barrier to get a license or renew a license if you're behind on student loans. Now, I think, you know, the easiest way to get caught up on student loans is probably have a job and make some money. So it's barriers like that that the commission looked at.
Very good. Backing up a little bit, since you mentioned you're complaint-driven, in the past, agents were given direction that, or advice that if they made a Trek complaint, that it could take a year or more to resolve. What is the timing look like today?
Sure, I can answer that. Most are resolved within about six months. I'm proud of our enforcement team for their turnaround time. There is an investigation that needs to take place. And so as those complaints come in, they basically get in line for an investigation. But most are resolved within six months. And then the reason that they often go longer than that is because they, there is a process to, to be litigated, really, to go to the state office of administrative hearings for a trial-type experience. And that is if you can't come to a settlement before then. So most are settled within about six months. And if not, they go to this state office of administrative hearings and that just takes a while to get filed and, and scheduled, that sort of thing.
Going back to
I just looked up that number. Seventy-four percent of all the complaints are under six months. Twenty-four percent are six to 12 months, and only 3% are over 12 months. So and, and that's, go to our website, look at the minutes, those charts are there, but they're definitely moving them, moving them around quicker.
That's great, great. Back to the licensing, and we've heard this from quite a few members. And I see Paul is asking now, are there any thoughts on pertaining to levels of licensing? Like an apprentice or advanced level licensing that relates to levels of training or experience? Possibly an opportunity to raise the bar for seasoned agents?
You going to take that one or you want me to?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the commission will always look at anything. I know there was a lot of movement for a special license for property managers. You know, and then when, we'll talk about Sunset a little bit and like everything else hit that kind of up put on the back burner. They're always looking at different things at the Education Standards Advisory Committee. And a lot will just have to do with, with how it moves through the commission and, and what everybody deem, deem it as, as needed. So there's nothing in the pipeline as of yet, but you always throw, throw something, you know, through the Education Standards Advisory Committee.
A question here from Shelly, is there a way for more than the broker of record to get notified on licensee update information for expirations, et cetera?
All right, come back one more time, I'm sorry.
She said, is there a way for more than the broker of record to get notified on licensee update information?
That's interesting. So I'm curious to know who else she would like to see. A lot is possible, but I think I'd just like to have a little bit more information about what, what, what she'd like to see and, and and how that might be helpful to them, then there, but I, I'm guessing it's possible. We are updating our website constantly so that there is more information available at the fingertips of, of all, but especially license holders so that they can do some self, self-service at midnight instead of having to call us to do something during business hours.
And I'm not sure who asked that question, but if you will follow that up with an email to myself or Chelsea, maybe, maybe the designated supervisors need to also receive the email or something. And that way, maybe we can get a little bit more information and then maybe find a solution.
My guess here is, and somebody just commented as well, my guess would be maybe an office manager, a team leader, something like that. So.
I think, I, I think if they're designated as a supervisor, I think that that could certainly be looked at.
Yeah. I see a few, few more people saying for a larger company, it would be good for the office manager or team leader to be notified. So, right. Yeah. So how long, switching topics here, how long should the new licensee process take?
Okay, so applications are valid for a year. Of course, within this world of COVID-19, that, that also has been extended. So if application, if the year application deadline hit in March, April, May, or June, it will be extended through the end of July. There, there are also some extenuating circumstances that if anybody has a circumstance that they believe means that they need longer, they can simply contact the agency for, to get a special exception to that. Right now, there, in some areas, there are delays in scheduling exams. And so that could be one reason that a person needs a longer period of time. But in normal times, outside of the COVID-19 context, the application is valid for one year. After we have all of the information we need, after someone applies online and has course completion documents that are submitted to our agency through email, and a, a response should be provided within about 10 days. Sometimes they're to hang up on fingerprints. But the entire processing should take no longer than 30 days. That's really our goal for issuing licenses. But my hope is that it happens more often than not, not much sooner than that. And I'll also say that that is something that we're taking a very close look at right now. It is only recently that we were able to monitor the amount of time it's been taking us to issue license, meaning the amount of time our fingerprints are on them. We spend a lot of time asking for more information and then waiting on an applicant to return that. So we've just determined how a technology that allows us to measure how, how, how many days we have our fingerprints on it. And I want that number of days to be reduced significantly. So that'll be an initiative of ours over the coming months.
And on the website, you can go to the website and, and look on processing dates and it will show each category, initial license, renewal, initial corporate, renewal, corporate, brokers, whatever. It'll show where they're processing it. That's updated each Monday. So if you get on it Friday, you have to realize that was where they were at on Monday. And I think you can also track where your process is through the application by last night.
So there was a lot, I've seen a lot of questions coming in about renewal requirements. Is there any plan to change or increase renewal requirements? Also, if we would be increasing, what would your thoughts be on what type of course would be required?
Sure. So starting next February, we will be adding the three hours of contracts that will be included within the 18 hours. So, you know, has there been much conversation about changing or increasing the renewal requirements? That has been the conversation and it's been, do you do the three hours of contracts within the 18 hours? Or do you increase the number of hours to 21? The commission decided to keep it at 18, but to keep those, but to include three hours of contracts. That will not be a course that the agency will write and issue to license holders for their, you know, for their education. It will be, we will have a whole lot more that comes out to license holders and education providers in the coming months. But this will be an opportunity for license holders to take whatever contracts class that would benefit their practice. And that will count towards the three hours of contracts. But again, it's not, that will not go into effect until next February.
Very good. I see some people commenting that they're excited about the contracts. And they're not joking. So, very good. So I was just taking a look there. But moving along here, talking about CE, Zoom learning has obviously become very popular. We are on Zoom right now and streaming to Facebook. And it's very convenient for license holders. Do you anticipate that Trek will continue to allow instructors to provide non-elected CE courses by Zoom as a choice if proper guidelines are followed?
Yes. In fact, this is, I know this might be a surprise to many of you, but this is not a new thing. The way that we regulate education is live or recorded, really. So if you are in a live Zoom education experience, you, you will continue to be able to, to receive your education that way, just as you have, just like being in a classroom. And then, of course, we also have our distance learning education opportunities, which is really subscribing to education that was previously recorded and going that route. But that's not new, though it is more utilized now more than ever. And we will continue to allow that in the future.
Very good.
Well said. I love the yes.
I tried to get to yes.
Yes. They're thanking you for that. So you mentioned Sunset Review a couple of times. Since the Sunset Review was completed last year, what changes have been put in place to meet the requirements that were given to you by the state?
Okay, let me, I'll start there. Someone mentioned earlier, not everybody understands what Sunset is, and so let me back up a little bit. Every state agency in Texas goes before the Sunset Committee to, basically, I will be very, want to justify their existence. You know, why do we need an agency to, to, you know, regulate and, and supervise licensees, whether it's real estate, right-of-way inspectors, appraisers, so. Trek appeared before Sunset and the final report came out February of 19, I guess, or I guess November of 19, everything kind of started hitting in February. And, and Sunset was concerned that the, we had a average hold time of almost, you know, 14, 15, 16 minutes. We have a drop rate well higher than it should. They didn't think Trek was addressing the concerns that need to be addressed. And so, you know, since Sunset, a lot of changes have happened. Yet at the same time, I will tell you, a lot of things were already implemented to help change occur. We have certainly gotten, gotten a hold on, uh, control of the hold time under a minute. The drop call rate is now, Chelsea Craig, I think around 5%. I say that's almost just market-driven. That's someone walking in the elevator, calling, then hanging up because another call comes in or whatever. So, I mean, the, the, the staff has certainly taken everything with Sunset and reviewed it and said, what can we do to improve? There was some monies that backed for a building, you know, y'all know me, I'm not going to pull any punches. A $12 million, you know, sat back for a building and yet at the same time, Sunset did not think that, that we were servicing the members like we should have as far as answering the phone, processing licenses and, and tracking stuff. So, I mean, there was not a single thing that Sunset brought up that the agency, the commission, the commissioners staff, that everybody did not dissect. And, you know, and since then, I think we've made some great changes. But kudos to the staff because the staff really took that and moved it forward. And that did not, that did not start when Chelsea came on board. That started immediately. Everybody really taking control. And I think it sent a message to the commissioners that, you know, this is not a job where you put Scott Kessler, Texas Real Estate Commission, there's some responsibility. And I think every commissioner that sits now realizes that it's their responsibility to, to take ownership of what Sunset Trek, what Trek, what Sunset Trek was not doing well. And I think we've moved it forward. I think if you look at our website, tracking the licensees, renewal cycles, sponsoring license, reducing fees, setting up a reserve fund, finding big item, big expense items and putting money back for them in the future. I mean, I think we've made great strides since Sunset. I think there's still a lot to do. Chelsea, I'll have you follow that.
Scott's exactly right. This started long before, before I was here and the agency has made great strides. I can tell you that in our Sunset reporting that is still required, basically, what, how are you, how are you doing at resolving the issues that arose in the Sunset process? We have been able to say, we completed, we, we have finished all that we have been asked to do, with one exception. And that is, one, one directive was to streamline the inspector education rules. And that is in process, but has, is a very tedious process to just make sure we get it right, to, to be frank. And so we've gone through several drafts. It has been reviewed many times, even by the governor's new regulatory compliance division. And we're, we're on the verge of having that complete. So several of the, the directives that were provided to us were in the form of legislation. A bill that was passed that said, you know, change these things in your rules. And other things were management directives. And the most prominent of which was to provide better customer service and to answer the phone faster. And of course, that is, we have succeeded in that. Our call, we answer calls within about a minute on average right now with an abandonment rate of what, like you said, Scott, of about 5%. We've also addressed some IT challenges that we had so that we can be more responsive to our license holders. And we've created some web-based tools that are available to license holders, an application tracker, a CE tracker. We have automated the certified license history so that nobody needs to make a phone call to figure out what their license history is. You can just go online and look. We made great progress. And I, I say we, but it should be the agency long before I came. I'm very, very thankful for the work that they've done. My hope is that in a year, we don't have to really talk about Sunset, other than how we're planning for the next one.
Good. So this question has come in a few times. What can licensees and consumers do to help change the Trek guidelines as they currently stand? Should we contact our state legislators, legislators, excuse me, and/or the governor to ask for that, for things to be included?
Very good question.
How can they help you?
You're, you're always welcome to do those things. I would say, you know, during the legislative process, to the extent that you want to see changes, I welcome you to, to send an email to me and/or Scott so that, in, in fact, the last slide of our PowerPoint, Christina, includes our email addresses. So you can share that at the end. But members of the legislature, I would never discourage you from, from going that But members of the legislature, I would never discourage you from going that route. But I also just want to mention that Houston Association of Realtors and Texas Realtors are a wonderful resource for seeing legislative change. So I would encourage you to, as members, speak with your associations, and that will do, that's probably the most effective way to see change. Now, so sorry, one more thing. If it's a rule you want changed, rather than a law, our rules are available on our website. But if it's a rule, those are, those decisions are made at the commission level. Our commissioners, our nine commissioners are policymakers. And so they set our rules. So if you want to see a rule change, email me, email Scott, and we will talk, we will add that to the list of things for commissioners to review and consider.
And just to follow up, totally agree on rule changes, you know, let us know. If it's legislative, I mean, let us know. But do remember, we cannot lobby. As an agency, we cannot go to our state rep and say, look, this is really needed. Even though it might be needed, we cannot lobby. And that's where, you know, the relationship with the commission and the agencies and associations all come into play.
That's right. Also, remember that we have 203,000 license holders. And I, this might surprise you, but they don't all agree. So we live in that world, where, you know, we'll take the feedback of all of our license holders, but it may be that everybody can't win.
Some questions about updating here. Shannon asked if there's, and we saw this a few times too, are there any plans to update the paperwork form that agents use to get their broker's license? They find it difficult to use the current ones. Is there any, is there any plan to update that, excuse me?
Well, there could be now. I have, I don't have my broker's license. I have not filled out that form before. I'm happy to look at it. Shoot me an email with what you think is wrong with it, and let's go from there. But I, one thing that I want to make sure that we do as an agency is to make things as easy as possible. Make sure our rules are easy to understand, make sure our forms can be completed without having to follow up and ask questions. So I'm happy to look at that.
Okay.
And that is something we can definitely send to the Broker Responsibility Working Group. That is definitely in their will hours.
Excellent. Similar question here about making things easier. Is there any plan to update the website or make changes to the website so it's a little more intuitive?
Again, so we're constantly updating the website. I do believe we are, I hope this is right. Sometimes I act like the authority on something, and I get it just a little bit wrong. Somebody will tell me later if this is wrong. But I believe we're about to submit a survey to license holders on how usable our website is, just so that we can improve on that. So I welcome you to complete that survey. If you have anything specific that you would like to make it more intuitive, let us know. We're always trying to improve on that.
Great. And as Chelsea said, I will be putting up their email addresses when we go to wrap up. Harold had a question. Are there any veteran benefits in regards to licensing?
Great question. We, my pause is that we're kind of swimming in, we're in the process of updating some of that. I believe that veterans who move from other states have a priority application process to process their applications as quickly as possible. Some of the challenges around veterans, military spouses, others associated with the military is connected to substantial equivalency if someone is licensed in another place. That is almost always not the equivalent to the licenser process in Texas, which means there are more requirements to complete. But there are some special allowances for veterans to make the process simpler. Some of that is on our website. If you can't find it, let me know, and I'm happy to connect you to some of our license, our licensing director who can help us with that.
Great. I see about five or six people asking a similar question, so that means we need to talk about it. Who sets the guidelines for payment of option and earnest payments? There's been discussion of having both being deposited with the title company.
Yes, there has been some discussion. There are some proposed contract changes that were voted on in May.
Do you want to fill in there, Chelsea, while we get to that?
I was thinking, oh, how long is this gonna be frozen? I think he'll come back in just a second, but should I talk over him?
Yeah, go ahead. I'm trying to mute him.
Okay. So the changes to forms are a two-part process. They go before our commission twice. So they have gone before our commission at the recommendation of the broker lawyer the first time in February. And they approved the changes, which included...
We are now coming up on August 28th.
Did you mute him?
I'm trying to, yeah.
I can't hear him anymore. Okay, so I'll go ahead and say that the process for changing promulgated forms is just like, it is a rule within, it's an agency rule, which means the commission reviews it twice. The broker lawyer committee requests or recommended changes that included changes to how the option fee is paid. And the commission considered that in February and approved those changes for public comment. And so those are currently open for public comment. And so as a license holder, I encourage you to go look at those forms and make comments to what you like and what you dislike so that the broker lawyer committee can again review them. And before then, the commission reviews them once more. There has been a lot of conversation of the changes to option fee payment. And so I would expect there to be some shift from current language before it's approved. He's back. He's still muted, but he's back.
That's the way to not answer a question, just vaporize into the background.
Well, we got the question answered, so that's all that matters.
Work it out, work it out.
So a question here from Sandy. She's basically saying that depending on who she takes classes with, it seems to take longer with some companies, you know, instead of others. Why does it take so long for those to be reported to TRAC?
They have up to 10 days to report after a class has, after you've taken a class, it may not be reported for up to 10 days. If it's taking longer than that, please tell us, because they should only have 10 days.
And what is the processing time once it gets to you, once it's submitted?
Once it's submitted to us, I think we have to, I think we receive it, and then the following business day it should post. So our process is not long.
Excellent. I know we just have a few more minutes here, and I do see there are going to be some questions that are a little more, maybe a one-on-one question for Chelsea or for Scott. And we'll put up their email address in a second. But since you mentioned making public comment, Pat asked, where do you go to make those comments on the option fees?
We, you should have received an email from us today, in fact, that provides that process for all of the rules that are now up for public comment. So it should be through our website that you can do that.
Okay, very good. So Chelsea and Scott, we're nearing the end here. Are there any final thoughts or takeaways that you want to leave with our members?
I'll go first in case I get cut off again. First of all, thank everybody for attending. I saw, I saw a bunch of questions in chat. Christine, if you can make sure we get those, we'll try to address each one of them or put them in the pile. But thank y'all for attending. I wish this would have been in person, with more interaction. But we certainly got a lot of good questions and ideas and concerns. And I know we'll get more once we get those questions that were chatted. Chelsea?
Same. I wish that I was with you in person. I wish I could see who was on this Zoom meeting and could just see your faces and know if any of our jokes have fallen flat or if we're actually funny. I think we're probably not funny, but that's okay. I do look forward to seeing each of you in person and visiting with you. I think the focus of our agency is on people. And it's very important to me that we do right by people, those within our agency and those that we license. So we will do our very best in that regard. And you let me know if you ever need anything.
Excellent. Well, this has been wonderful. We have your information up on the screen. And again, I know there were some questions that you guys had for them that we didn't get answered. I will try my best to get them to Chelsea and Scott, but you can always direct your questions to them as well. Also, there is an email on the screen right now. General questions can be answered at general.counsel@trac.texas.gov. Scott and Chelsea, thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. And thank you to all of the HR members that tuned in, whether you were on the Zoom call or on Facebook. This was recorded, and you will be able to watch it from the beginning once we finish up here. And we will be sending it to all of the people that registered for it via Zoom. So I hope everyone has a great rest of your week. Have a good day. Bye, everyone. Bye-bye.